With liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, to Planning Board for Monday, November 29. Any public comment? Any comments on your board? All right, our first appointment is for 234 Summer Street. If the applicant would like to step forward and give us a brief description of what you're looking for.
How are we doing today?
Just your name and address for the record.
Daley Miller, 234 Summer Street, Lunenburg. And we're just looking to remove a fence from our property.
So we discussed this at a previous meeting, but then wanted the applicant to come in.
Well, the...
The question was whether or not the property was owned by the applicant. I've confirmed with the assessor's office that they do have a conveyance and it's owned by a, I don't know if it's a corporation or an LLC.
Oh, LLC, yeah.
Yeah, correct, that is...
And that is you?
Yes, that Mr. and Mrs. Miller are the prime officers of.
Okay.
I think the actual request was in a previous packet.
Yeah, it was.
So it's not in tonight's meeting's material?
Yeah, and I mean, I can, essentially, probably about four years ago, the Millers purchased a piece of property that was a former commercial building in the industrial zone. They petitioned the zoning board for a special permit to convert one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, the commercial building which had been retail, which is not permitted in the industrial zone, to a residence. They were granted this special permit by the zoning board. Because their use is covered by a special permit, they applied for site plan approval. The planning board ultimately granted them site plan approval. The neighbor at the time at 236 had some concerns about conflict between his automotive repair business and their residence, and it was negotiated that an eight-foot vinyl fence would be placed on the property line as a privacy for the Millers and as a protection for the business rights of the owner at 236. As we discussed last time, the Millers have taken control of 236, 238, 236, 240, and 244. And their request is to remove the fence from its ordered location and relocate it along the front property line of the 236, 240, 244 parcels. In order to, essentially what it does is they had a shared driveway between the two buildings, and the fence eliminated access, vehicular access, to the garage in the rear from anything other than like a Toyota Camry, because it made the driveway really small. And my understanding is that they would like to now be able to access all of the property that they currently own.
And my only concern is a lot, the meeting that we discussed this was the fact that the owner of record by the assessor's office was still the prior owner. But now that we've confirmed that you are in fact the owner, I have no problem with the proposed change.
How is that going to work with an eight-foot fence? Because I don't, is that us or is that ZBA?
That would be the building commissioner and ZBA.
Okay.
And I believe what, the way it ends up working out is they just need a building permit for the eight-foot fence, because I know that Mrs. Miller has spoken with the building commissioner about what she needed to do to be able to move it. And I believe she's filed a building permit application that's waiting for this approval to be able to, for my office to sign off and them to move forward with what they are going to be required from him.
Now, normally a fence doesn't require a building permit. A building permit is required because it's eight feet?
Correct.
Okay.
I think you can go up to six feet.
Six feet is without a permit. Once it hits 10, it becomes a structure and needs to meet setbacks.
Okay.
And then, could you tell us what the previous uses were for the parcels that you just acquired?
I've been there since I was two years old, and there's nothing, nothing's been there.
Okay, so they've been vacant for a number of years?
Vacant, yeah.
Okay. And it's your intent to use the new parcels for your paving business?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Just need use to get down through there, you know? You can't, it's nine feet off my house to the line.
Yeah, no, the thing that I'm just trying to think through here is because, in my opinion, that would be a change of use, which that would trigger site plan approval.
Yeah, and I think we're talking about two sort of separate things. The fence is one issue in that it's related to the 234 site. And the removal of it does need that de minimis change in order for them to do it without running foul of the approval. Once there is additional use or action on 236, 240, 244, that could potentially trip a need for other permitting, whether it's outdoor storage, whether it's improvements or other uses that would require either site plan approval or other things through the zoning board. But for the purposes of the fence, I don't think that there's any triggering effect that would bring us into site plan approval.
I just want to make sure you understand what we're saying is the chairman's pointed out that if you start using those adjacent lots for your business, it will trigger another permit review potentially because you're changing it from, I'm assuming it's zoned residential?
No, it's all zoned industrial.
It's all zoned industrial.
So his business would be appropriately zoned for, excuse me, for that area. What it is, is he's a contractor's yard, I think, which would fall into allowable ability in the office park industrial.
Yeah, and I think you can do it by right.
Yeah, the outdoor storage and the change of use is what would, outdoor storage might trigger a special permit from the zoning board, and the use of it or the paving of it or any of those things might have stormwater or site plan implications. So before you do any major changes...
Yeah, I'm not doing it for a while.
Yeah, just come and...
Lucky to get the property right now.
Yeah, just come and ask, and we can talk about what that might look like and what you might need to do to move forward.
I drove by the other day, and like there's milling spread in equipment park.
Parked over there, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm not ripping the buildings down, I'm not building anything, structures on the place.
No, but...
I just took all the overgrowth, all the overgrowth was around the building. I took the roots off, all the shrubs, not even any trees down or anything. It was just all overgrown.
Yep, no, and I see where you're coming from.
Just to clean it up and make it...
I'm in the contractor's world, so I understand where you're going with it. The fact remains that when you buy a property that's been vacant and you now move in, and your use is essentially a contractor's yard, but you also have outdoor storage in terms of, if you have a pile of millings, gravel, asphalt, any of that type of stuff, that's outdoor display.
Correct.
And that triggers a couple of different things.
Does it matter if you're selling it or not? I'm not selling it, it's just for my own personal use.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
If you're storing the product there, that's the way it works. And so, we're not the zoning board of appeals, all we deal with is site plan approval. But when you change a use, you trigger site plan approval on the new properties. And I was going to pull it up on, in our bylaws, I believe your contractor's yard use is allowable by right.
Okay.
I think you need a special permit in the commercial district.
Before I purchased the property, the bank made sure I can use it for my business, and they said everything was approved now.
Well, yeah, and this isn't...
They made sure that's what took so long, because they were checking out the laws and everything to make sure, why buy it if I can't use it for my...
Yeah, no, and don't misunderstand what we're saying. It isn't really a question of can you do it or can you not? It's more a question of this is the process, and there's just some paperwork and so on.
I want to do it right, you know?
It's a by right use.
Okay, all right, all right. So that makes things a lot...
So I'm all set?
Simpler.
Except for the outside storage, right?
Outside storage would be the thing, yeah. So...
Do I have to file, do I have to come back?
Let's talk with the building commissioner, so...
Just get the fence to fix.
Yeah, we're here tonight about the fence, and we'll sort the rest of it out.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think you did anything in bad faith.
Yeah, no, not at all. Just want to make sure you're aware of the process and can get everything organized. But I don't have any issues in terms of the fence. And then the only other piece of the puzzle would be if the building commissioner does find that it is indeed a change of use, then he could apply for a waiver from site plan approval on that end of things. But in terms of this business, I think we, any other questions about the fence?
I would make a motion to approve the de minimis change for removal of the fence at 234 Summer Street.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
For the fence, and then you can work with the building commissioner and the visiting owners.
Yeah, why don't you swing in tomorrow, and we'll get with case and figure out exactly what you need to do.
All right, thank you, guys.
Our next appointment is for a public hearing at 324 Flat Hill Road.
Everybody is on Zoom.
Excellent.
Hi, this is Mark Elbag on Zoom.
Excellent. And, would you like to do the honors?
Sure. So the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 22, 2021, 6:35 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review a stormwater management permit under Chapter 204 Stormwater and Storm Sewers of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for property located at 324 Flat Hill Road, Map 087, Parcel 0026-01, Lunenburg, Mass. Owner applicant is Mattson Homes 2, Inc., 129 Mason Road, New Ipswich, New Hampshire, 03071. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Mass Ave, Lunenburg. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, and...
That's good. Excellent. So we have Mr. Elbag?
Yep.
And Mr. Mattson. Okay. One of you gentlemen would like to go over the plan with us?
Yeah, certainly. This is a single-family home house lot application. As you know, the stormwater permit's been filed. This house will be served by a common driveway to Flat Hill Road, also with onsite septic system and well. As you can see from the permit application, everything's shown on the plan, and we, as recently as today, submitted a revised plan just showing some of the erosion control barriers and the locations of those barriers to Mr. Walsh. Yep, there it is. All revisions are in red for clarity.
So we don't, we don't have that.
And I can't see that.
Oh, okay.
No, see the red areas? That's the erosion control, but I can't see them.
I can highlight them.
Can you make it bigger?
Well, yeah.
It basically wraps all the construction in erosion control barriers, and...
So you've got this one here around the center.
It goes around the existing wall, we'd like to keep that existing wall intact. That's why there's a blinking barrier there.
On here. Other than highlighting the erosion control, are there any other changes to the plan from November 1st?
No, no changes in the plan or stormwater report.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of Jeff Walsh's review letter?
Yes, I do. So there were, I believe there were two comments that generated action items from us. We got that right before the last scheduled meeting. One was this erosion control on the plan, and the other comment was related to a map showing the area for the stormwater calculation, which I've pointed out is included in the report. It's actually page 84 of the PDF, I believe. I'll actually, I'll pull up the PDF now, just to...
Page what?
I believe it's page 84, I'm going to pull that up right now.
84, there is, this doesn't go up to page 84.
Of the PDF? Yeah, it does. It should be two-sided, it looks like a post-condition...
All right, well, the page numbers are wacky.
P on one P.
Because page 14 is...
Page 43 of the post-condition is page 84 of the...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Have we received feedback from Graves after the map?
Just the first letter.
Just the first letter, okay.
The other came through, I think, early this afternoon, I saw it.
Okay.
While I appreciate the, you know, you pointing it to us, I would feel more comfortable after Jeff has an opportunity to take a look at this.
Agreed. We didn't have any issues with the way it's being presented.
On the proposed rain garden, I'm assuming that's part of your stormwater control?
Sorry, I don't know if I lost you there, but it's page 40 is the map that's referenced.
Yeah, the rain garden, is that part of your stormwater control or is that aesthetic?
It is part of the stormwater control to meet the treatment requirement for the removal of nutrient loading, including phosphorus.
Okay, do you have a maintenance plan for the rain garden?
Yes.
Okay.
It's towards the back of, towards the back of that PDF that you were just on. And it's set up as a template to be recorded for the deed.
It is, it is scheduled to be recorded?
Uh, yes. That's how it's set up.
So similar to other permits in which there is maintenance of a rain garden, I would want the reports to be submitted to us annually on July 1st?
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem.
I imagine that when this gets approved, it'll be with the standard conditions, which that is included in.
Okay. And the recording is also part of the standard condition or not?
The decision gets recorded.
But I would want, I would want the rain garden operation and maintenance recorded.
Well, that's a condition of the decision. Because it says as attached in Appendix A for all stormwater facilities and their O&amp;Ms. So the decision gets recorded, so therefore it gets tied to the decision, gets tied to the deed. And if, you know, it sounds as if the applicant is already anticipating recording this with the property deed at closing, so it's, it'll be redundant, but you know, redundancy is never bad in situations like this.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I don't have any other concerns, but I would like Mr. Walsh to have the opportunity to review the drainage area map.
Okay, and do you want me to prepare a decision for the 13th?
Provided Mr. Walsh is fine, I don't see why not. It's just my opinion.
I have one question about the infiltration trench. I would assume that there's some sort of connection between that and the rain garden, but it isn't depicted on the plan?
Uh, no, there's actually no, there actually is no connection. It is up gradient, but the idea of the rain garden is to treat the impervious area coming off of the driveway. Roof water is considered clean, and therefore treatment's not needed prior to infiltration. However, the impervious area other than the roof is not. So what I did is I placed the rain garden down gradient of the impervious area to catch that area. And I've also placed it, which I've done on others, is I try and put it in a highly visible location just so that it's not in the back and forgotten about, to kind of keep some, give some, you know, reasoning for the homeowner to have to maintain it.
Okay.
When it's in front, when it's in front and highly visible, I find, you know, it's much more apt to be maintained by the homeowners.
Okay, so you don't, there's no pipe in the infiltration trench that's simply a trench filled with stone?
Yep, it's an infiltrate, infiltration chamber in a stone envelope with a, with an overflow, outflow pipe, so that would actually be up gradient. So even though it is clean water, some of it will in fact probably go through the rain garden.
Yep. Just so we're clear, I'm talking about the trench that goes along the driveway, not the cul-de-sac?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So the trench that goes along the driveway, is there a pipe in there or are you simply sloping everything into the rain garden?
Uh, everything's done with sloping to the rain garden.
Okay.
So the idea is the trench will catch the first flush and treat and infiltrate, and then the overflow will then go to the rain garden for further treatment. I didn't, there is no way to really pipe it, or it would, it would kind of take away from the infiltration that that swell is providing.
Yep, no, that's fine, I just wanted clarification on it, that's all. Any other questions?
Well, not that it's anything to do with stormwater, but I don't see the reserve septic. I see the testing over here, but it's awful close to the rain garden, so I don't know if that would be the reserve area or not.
Uh, yeah, the reserve area is not shown on here as it's not a septic plan, but the reserve area is out beyond the rain garden on the septic design, towards the driveway. So it's right near, if you can see it, 919-1. Right in there, yep, right around that area.
So basically the stockpile area?
No, over here.
Where the cursor is on the, on the, yeah.
So down gradient of the rain garden, there you go.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess, I guess I do have a question now. Looking at the size of the septic system in the back of the property, and now the reserve area is, you know, towards the front adjacent to the rain garden, I'm concerned about the distance from the rain garden to the reserve and the potential sloping of the reserve. What's, on your reserve area, what is your proposed elevation for that?
Uh, so I can pull it up, but there wouldn't necessarily be an elevation. Title V just requires the reserve area be shown on the plan. But it would roughly be the same as what's depicted above. The good thing is it's down gradient, and it will be probably a mounded system.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I don't think it would take away from the rain garden at all.
Well, my concern is, you know, the back system is a mounded system. And looking, if you mound the front, aren't you going to be directing too much flow to that rain garden?
No, because it is down gradient.
Well, I mean, it's 510, unless I'm reading these topol lines wrong, the stockpile area is 511, 919-1 is 510. So you mound the system, you're potentially going to be above the rain garden.
Yeah, I mean, at the time of design, if the system were to ever fail, there's certainly room to do either or. I mean, there's certainly room on this lot to construct an independent mounded system, just like in the back, without any hydraulic impact to the rain garden. This is a pretty big lot, and there's plenty of room to do whatever is needed.
Well, I guess that's what I'm wondering honestly, is why would you place the reserve area adjacent to the rain garden since it is such a large lot? Does the testing show that that's the only area you can put the reserve, or what was the reasoning?
Uh, no, a lot of it's just keeping out of the 100-foot buffer to the well, so that, you know, that... That corner of the lot has the most kind of spare room, if you will, and it is down gradient. So what you could do is mound the system and have a swell in either direction, you know, pushing the overland flow basically around the mounded system, just like what's kind of designed in the rear. I can pull that plan up.
Is he pulling that plan up?
He's not going to be able to.
Well, he just said he's pulling the plan up.
Maybe he's pulling it up for his...
Yeah, I just wanted to double check where I'm placing it. I don't know if I have the ability to share it or not, but this reserve area is basically just below where the cursor is right now.
Just below, where's the, yeah, I can't see, we can't see his cursor, so...
It's actually a little, right there.
Okay.
Go down, go down a little bit with the hand, right there is the reserve area. So it is pretty well down gradient.
Right next to the outfall of a subdrain?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it is a little close to the subdrain. That might have to get moved if the reserve is ever constructed.
I guess I'd like to see the reserve area plan.
I guess my question would be, how soon would the reserve area be used? If the septic's constructed correctly, it's going to last 40 or 50 years.
The typical life of a septic system is 20 to 30, and it all depends on the use. So a family of one is going to be minimal, but you move in there with eight people, and it also depends, I used to work in the Board of Health for 18 years, so it also depends on whether or not you maintain it. If you pump it regularly as needed, you allow the effluent to go above the outpipe, then your system's going to fail. So it really depends on maintenance, it depends on occupancy, there's a number of factors. You can't say a septic system is going to last 40 or 50 years. Have I seen them last that long? Absolutely. I've also seen such systems fail after 10 years.
But the issue with the reserve area is it's really a code issue. It's required by code as part of a septic's design to show a reserve area, not necessarily designed, just a reserve area. And oftentimes when these systems fail, I do do a lot of repairs, and, you know, we're almost never actually using the reserve area because you end up doing all-new soil testing, all-new perck testing, and, you know, this is a large lot, you can put a system in any number of locations. The intent of the reserve area is just to show that if you are in a tight lot situation, that you could physically fit another system on the lot.
What was the perck rate and the groundwater at the septic and the reserve?
I don't have it right in front of me, but I can pull it up. And there really was no magic as to where those, where that testing was done. I mean, it's, I think it's pretty consistent across the lot. But I can pull it up, hang on. So the groundwater is, or actually, never mind, I have it on the septic design. The groundwater is 16 and 18 inches.
So 16 at the primary and 18 at the reserve?
These are the two in the back of the system. If you wait a second, I can pull up the other two. It's a 10-minute per inch perck rate.
Okay. And I'm assuming you did testing in the reserve?
Yes, that's what those, those test pits are shown on the plan, only because I used those test pits as part of the stormwater filing, uh, and that I submitted the soil data, so that's why I show those on the plan. But again, it's not meant, this plan's not intended to be a septic design by any means, or to show compliance with Title V by any means.
What happens if they, if they need to, say the system fails and they need to, to put in a new septic system, that won't trigger a stormwater review again, correct?
Correct.
So, so my concern is that, you know, in the unlikely event that this fails in, in short order, because either it's not maintained correctly, or something would occur, and then the system does end up adjacent to the rain garden or near that, that pipe, that's a concern to me.
I guess practically, and, and again, I'm not a, an engineer nor a registered sanitarian, but if one were to repair a septic system, if someone came to my house and my septic failed, and they said, "We're going to put it on the complete opposite side of the house where your tank and all of your piping is, and we're going to charge you an extra $5,000 because we have to cut a trench 900 feet around your house to pipe your waste through your entire yard to get to the new system," my first question would be, "Well, can you just put it next to the old system?" And, and if, if he's getting consistent groundwater readings and perk rates across the, the lot, one would infer that someone would go, "Well, why don't we look at next to this existing system?"
Well, one would, one would also infer that when you're designing it, you would put the reserve area there.
I don't know what the, again, I'm not an engineer or an R S, so I, it seems that reserve systems are often in an inconvenient spot away from the original system.
Not often, actually.
The ones that I've seen on plans like this.
No, no, just, just to speak of that, I did not do the soil testing. I think at the time of soil testing, there was no, I, there was no real plan of where the house may go, or how the lot may be laid out. So what oftentimes happens is you end up doing kind of two sets of soil testing, one is used as a reserve, but ultimately, what it does is, at the time of testing, is it gives you some flexibility, so, you know, if, if we didn't want the septic in the back like it's designed now, and didn't have the stormwater controls in the front, it might have made more sense to put the septic where that set of soil testing is. So it's, it's often done that way, and, and again, the reserve area is only to show, is only there to comply with Title V, it in no way represents, uh, where, where a system may go in the future if the system were to fail. Like I said, I do a lot of repairs, and I almost never end up in the original reserve area.
It's also possible to show a reserve area, you know, I mean, I've, I did this for a long time. You can, typically, it's, this is unusual, to have the reserve area on the complete opposite side of the lot. I have seen it in the past if they're unable to get testing that's consistent, and so therefore, that's the only option for the reserve area. On the septic plan, you might, have, have you submitted the septic plan to the Board of Health yet?
Uh, I believe so. It was completed and given to the client. I don't know if it's actually formally been submitted, but I did turn it over.
So prior, prior to our meeting on this, on the 13th, I would, I would request that we get input from Jim Giriffey on his thoughts about potential impacts to the, to the rain garden and stormwater system. And personally, I'd also like to, to either a photocopy of that section of the plan or something, if it's in fact been submitted to the Board of Health.
So there was actually, I just pulled up the data. There's actually been one, two, three, four, five deep holes, and there were three percolation tests on this lot. And because of the well location that was drilled, that's why we ended up, uh, that, I think it's 9-19-1 for the reserve. All of these, all of the testing data has groundwater between 16 and 22 inches, so they're all very consistent, and along with the perk data. It's, it's all glacial till sandy well.
How many, how many perk tests did you do?
There were three completed.
Okay. And how big is the lot?
And again, I didn't do the soil testing. I came, I came, I came in after this was completed, but, uh, I don't have the lot's size right here, hang on, it's on a different plan.
I think it's 160.
Bottom line, there's plenty of room on this lot. Yeah, there's plenty of room on this lot for a future septic.
So can we make a condition of the permit, the stormwater permit? But we don't have the data. So the, Mr. Allison just pointed out there are seven deep holes, and how many perks?
One, two, three, four, I think there should, I guess one of them's sufficient for the primary.
And four perks. So can we make it a condition of the permit that the reserve area cannot be placed adjacent to the rain garden without planning board approval?
I believe so, yeah.
I mean, you can, you can condition whatever you want.
Well, that would be a condition.
It's whether or not they would appeal it, um, and...
Installation of the reserve area shall require a review by the planning board.
Okay, that's different than placement of the reserve area, because what I was trying to reconcile was the placement of the reserve area is within Title V, which is the Board of Health. And so we, we, we could condition that if the reserve area is required to be used for installation of a septic system, uh, this permit needs to be modified.
And, and if we do, and if we do that, I'm fine, because I'm concerned about the potential impact. I still would like to have Jim Giriffey's opinion, and I'd also like to see a copy of that section of the septic plan, if in fact it's been submitted. Because I...
My comment along those lines would be that I don't know how that would actually play out in reality, because go 20 years down the road, the septic system needs to be addressed. They call a contractor out, and he's like, "Uh, unfortunately, the leach field's failed. We need a new leach field." They're going to go to Board of Health, get their permit, and be done.
Right, and that, but then, at that point, the, the onus is on the property owner, and so if the rain garden fails, or there's a stormwater problem, or something happens, I mean, I don't know what else to do. You know, ideally, in my opinion, the reserve area is located somewhere else on the property.
Well, and as Adam was saying, you know, in reality, and Mr. Elbag alluded to this as well, if the septic system were to fail, you're most likely going to try to put a leach field on either side of the existing one and keep all your infrastructure the same, where the pipe comes out of the house, goes to the tank, the pump chamber, and so on. The fact that the testing hasn't been done in that area is just a result of how the testing was done. I, I work with a lot of builders, and it's not uncommon for them to have testing on either side of the lot, just because they can put a septic in the front, a well in the back, or flip them the other way, or depending on groundwater levels, if they're doing a race system and it's closer to the house, a two-car under versus level with the house, it just provides flexibility. So it's not, they didn't do their testing so that it would meet stormwater compliance. They did their testing to give themselves flexibility to get a well in a septic system and all the infrastructure.
Completely agree, completely agree. The only issue that I'm having is, you know, it is uncommon, at least in all of the years that I worked for the Board of Health, to see them so vastly separated.
I think that's a function of each lot and how much space you have, and, you know...
But, but the potential impact to the rain garden and not infiltration trench is there, and, and that's what we're looking at.
I mean, there are offsets within Title V to drainage structures, which I think would come into play, so regardless, I think any future design, Title V would protect that rain garden. Just by the title, just by what's already in Title V code.
So if we can, if we can just get that information, and if we can do, and we, and, you know, if we can add that condition, that it would trigger a review, installation of the reserve area would trigger a review, then I'm okay with it, because it would be caught then, hopefully. But like you said, it could be missed, but then we're doing whatever we can to protect it in the future.
Anything else?
So, one more thing. The stabilized construction entrance is to protect town roads, not, uh, common driveways, so it's not in the right location.
I think the other portion of the driveway is already installed, is that correct?
Yeah, and the idea is just to keep the silt on site, so stopping it before the already-installed driveway, I think, is, is the intent there, so that if it never migrates onto the driveway, it therefore never migrates onto the town road.
Excellent. So our next meeting is December 13th. I think that should allow enough time for Graves to take a look at the updated plan, and then...
Yeah, I would expect we should be able to have everything for then.
Excellent. So I'll consider a motion to continue the hearing to December 13th at 6:35 PM.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye for myself.
Just one comment, is if you are able to get a copy of that reserve area, I'd be curious, I'd be curious to what Jeff's thoughts are.
Thank you. All right, our next appointment is for 475 Lemmonster Shirley Road.
Well, this is just deliberation on your closed public hearing. So there's no testimony to be taken, there's no public input, it's really just reviewing the decision that was drafted and ensuring that the language is consistent with what the board's original thoughts were.
And subsequent to our last meeting, I did have a conversation with Adam regarding my request to remove that language in one of the conditions, and I'm comfortable with it at this point, as written.
Okay. Which condition?
It was number, uh, condition...
It was condition...
40F.
40 Phase 2F. The concern was that the reference to mitigation being provided by the applicant be from the reference 10% design plans. Ms. Bertram and I talked about what that reference was to, and what went into the development of those design plans, and I, I think that she's, she just said she's comfortable with it, so...
My, my concern, if you guys, my, the concern that I voiced at the last meeting was if the impact is greater than 10%, depending on what the, what the tenant is. I want the, the owners of the, the applicant to implement the mitigative actions based on their proportional impact. So I was unclear on the 10% design submission, but in going back and looking at the information on the 10% design submission, it appears that they're also going to be looking at the intersection as a whole, and a traffic signal and potential lane shifts, et cetera, will be considered in the 10% design submission. So if you look at 33B, um, it talks about what that 10% designs, design plan will include. So it will survey for the intersection, which would include right-of-way geometric improvements and potential traffic signalization. So that, as long as we have a design that depending on their, their impact can be implemented, I understand it's only 10% complete, but I'm much more comfortable with the condition the way it's worded, so...
Is there anything else we need to add? I think...
I hope not.
Yeah, no, I think we've got everything.
The hours, did you, you did, you did the hours, 7 to 5, and then 8 to 3.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions, if we're all looking at the same thing. Did you change additional record documents, number three, from proposed...
I did.
Okay, great, because that wasn't on ours. And the other question that I just had, um, I just wanted to make sure that, like you were talking about, 33C, when it says conduct monitoring study within three months, that initial monitoring study is at the site driveways to determine if we're exceeding the 100...
Correct, and it does say at the site driveway.
Just wanted to make sure we all were clear on that, okay?
The updated one says conduct a monitoring study at the site driveway within three months of initial occupancy. There was a request to remove, um, there's some redundancies in the special conditions. I think 37, 38, and 39 are restatements of other conditions, but when the board asked that the memorandum be transposed into, or transcribed into, conditions, I just put everything that was there in there. And in 33, some of those things are, are restated. 38 is A in condition 33. The monitoring study, I think, is restated.
Kind of in number 40 in general, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I, I don't know that it makes a, a massive difference one way or the other, because if they're doing one, they're doing both.
As long as they don't say different things, I mean, if they...
No, they say, they say the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that clarification.
With number 31, clearing the vegetation on that corner, I feel like there was a timeline associated with that, right?
Uh, I believe it was prior to occupancy.
I thought the letter from Keating's was prior to...
Construction. That's what I thought, too. Because you're going to have vehicles going in and out of that site, it makes sense to do it prior to construction, and I think we need to add that language.
I agree with that. Eight acres of building is going to take a lot of trucks.
Right. So I would just add prior to sec, construction before, at the intersection.
Issue some building permit?
Yeah, there you go. I like that better.
Will commence or will be completed?
Completed. I, I would like it completed before they start construction, because there's going to be a lot of trucks going in and out.
Well, and I feel like we've kind of got this covered, because in the additional recorded documents, we've got the tree-cutting plan and the letter from Keating's on there, which I think in that letter, my recollection is that letter says that that work will be done prior to, but...
This redundancy isn't a bad thing, and this is our, this is our condition, and so I would add it to that language on 31. This redundancy isn't a bad thing, and this is our, this is our condition, and so I would add it to that language on 31.
So it will read, at the end of that, it'll say this work must be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Nope, other than that, I'm good with it.
I will entertain a motion to approve the stormwater permit and site plan approval for 475 Lemmonster Shirley Road.
So moved, with the, with the changes as we discussed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Yes.
Yes, we too.
And all of the efforts that you have put forth to mitigate the issues.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Moving on to minutes approval for October 25th and November 15th.
So I actually have a comment on the November 15th minutes. And they're correct, except we took them out of order, and I think, so in the, the way the minutes are written, if you look at specifically 101 Pleasant Street, it appears that we approved the A and R prior to the withdrawal, and we actually requested them to withdraw the plan before we would act on the A and R, and I think it makes the minutes make much more sense. So I would like the minutes to be changed to be, to say, taken out of order, and, and that goes before we make the approval.
Okay.
Very good point. Any other comments on the minutes?
Nope, I don't have any other issues. So, do you have any concerns? So I would make a motion to approve the minutes for 1025, 2021. Minutes for 360 Flat Hill Road, Scenic Road, 102521. 102521, 360 Flat Hill Road, stormwater permit. 102521, board warrant articles, special town meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I would make a motion to approve the 111521 minutes for 475 Lemmonster Shirley Road.
Second.
Just to be clear, we're doing 11152021 and 1115...
No, I would want the 1115 changed, so that's why I just want to do the 475. Yeah, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Committee reports. TCP Building Design Committee.
So has anybody met since last week?
I don't, uh, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, no, I, we haven't.
AgCon.
Um, we did finally meet again. Uh, there were three members and one alternate, so it was pretty much just a, hey, how are you, how you been, and getting back to the swing of running meetings and gathering. So there really wasn't anything productive, but we did have a meeting.
Stormwater Task Force.
We haven't met since, when is our next meeting? Do we have one scheduled, Adam?
We do. It's the ninth or the 16th. One is stormwater and the other is economic development.
Okay.
I think it's the 16th is stormwater.
Okay.
Open Space.
I can't remember. No, I've given the report. We haven't met since our last meeting.
Capital Planning.
Capital Planning, we did meet. Um, I don't know if I relayed this. We met with the school, we went over their plans. We were supposed to meet tomorrow night, uh, last week, but that meeting got canceled. So we are meeting, oh, I, the ninth or the 16th. So I'm going to have to check. Can you let me know when the stormwater is?
Yeah, I'm almost positive it's the 16th.
Well, no, there, an email just went out to ask which night works for capital planning, because we're meeting with the DPW next. So I just want to let Heather know which one doesn't work.
Economic Development.
Uh, we have not met since the last update was given.
Okay. And MRPC and MJTC are both Mr. Brenner's.
So one, one point is since Mr. Brenner is unable to attend those meetings right now, I wonder if it makes sense for him to appoint an alternate just while he's out, and he can do that. Oh, it's on there. Okay.
Uh, when did we last meet for stormwater?
I don't know, Adam. Don't worry about it. We'll, we'll, we can look at it.
Okay.
Have you had a meeting with them?
Yes.
Moving on to directors items. Right of First Refusal Parcel H490 Chase Road.
So this is the parcel that was created at the last meeting through the A and R process for, um, Mr. Pierce. So it doesn't have any real frontage. It surrounds his existing home. It's, I don't know, I think it's like 2.5 acres, give or take.
2.939.
So, give or take. Isn't that the language we use in these now?
Yep.
And it abuts the 61A land that is in the process of being conveyed or is known as the tree farm.
The Open Space Committee voted not to recommend exercising the right of first refusal.
Which kind of jives.
One point that did come up in, in, I'm going to have to go back to look at my notes, but one of the, the comments that was made by the chair, and I thought that it was valid, is that the process, the A and R process would certainly seem to indicate that there is a proposed change from the chapter exemption. And the question was asked of whether or not that should have in fact triggered review at that time, because if you're separating it into a separate lot, under the A and R process, it's clear that you don't intend to keep it in, in chapter. So the question came up of, of, you know, what triggers that?
He had already filed the, the chapter when he filed the A and R.
Are you sure? Because I know Brandon, Brandon was concerned about...
Yes, because he, because he came and talked to me about it, and he said, I'm doing this.
So we just weren't made aware, the Open Space, this wasn't made aware of it?
Well, they were waiting, they were waiting for, they were waiting for council to say what he had submitted was a qualified notification.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the process is, it comes here to Elaine, and she communicates with council about, here's what we've received, here's what it says. Council reviews it to make sure it's a qualified package, and then it goes to all of the committees and boards. So he filed the A and R like three days after he dropped that off with Elaine.
Okay.
And as you can see, his package is wildly different than when an attorney comes in and submits, you know, a qualified offer PNS package. It's all buttoned up. It's, so it was, I think sometimes there's just a little, a little delay.
Okay.
But yeah, if, if someone, if someone files an A and R, you're right, it would conceptually trigger that, and we do advise them, hey, you're changing, you're changing this. If this is in chapter, you really need to go and make sure that you're
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll just inform the committee that what happened.
And putting this particular parcel aside, but if somebody had a parcel of 50 acres and they're doing an A and R, that doesn't necessarily trigger 61A, because they could...
No, they could be selling half their farm to someone else and keeping the other half as a farm, and they're not, not taking it out of 61, that, yeah. I mean, it's, when people come in with something like that...
Or they could file the A and R, but then never, like, get our approval, but never go to the registry of deeds and put it on file, and it just, it floats, so.
Yeah, some people file A and R sometimes as a freeze for zoning, because it creates a three-year freeze on zoning.
Yep.
And the A, and same thing with the subdivision. I've had numerous agricultural parcels over the years where they have gone through the definitive subdivision process just to have it on file and never exercised it and continued to use it as an agricultural parcel. This one was a little bit different, because it was, you know, clearly specific piece of property that was going to become residential.
Yeah.
But we, we, when people come in with an A and R, we often will talk to them to find out
What it is they're doing.
Especially folks like this who have agricultural parcels and they know what they're doing and, and what the implications are for, for those other things.
Okay, to the point that Tanner just raised is that they can file an A and R but never record it. How long after the signage do you have to record an A and R?
Depends who you talk to at the registry. Our, so there's no way for the planning board to rescind an A and R. And our rules and regs say that needs to be recorded within 10 days, but there's no enforceable action from that. Actually, I think we removed that, because there was no enforceable action. I have worked in communities where, after six months, the registry won't take it, they'll make them get it re-signed. I have had people come in and say, you know, I found this A and R that I did 15 years ago. Can I record it? And I'll say, I don't think you can. It's supposed to be done within six months, and they'll come back the next day with a recording receipt.
So regardless of whether you record it or not, you freeze zoning just by getting the signature? Is that what we're saying?
Once the A and R is, is signed by the planning board, there's a three-year freeze.
So it's three years from the date the A and R is signed?
That is my understanding of it.
Okay, so if you don't record it in three years, you'd have to re, you'd have to redo it anyway.
Or you could record it, and maybe the lots are still legal, maybe they're not.
Maybe they're not, okay.
Maybe, maybe the use you intended to do there is still allowable, maybe it isn't. Same with the subdivision. A subdivision freezes zoning for eight years.
Okay, thank you.
So the select board would be looking for this board's recommendation on that.
I concur with Open Space.
So do I.
Big surprise there.
Motion on 490 Chase Road.
I would make a motion that the planning board recommends that the Selectment waive right of first refusal for 490 Chase Road Parcel H.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to board representation for the Economic Development Committee, MRPC, MJTC, which are all held by Mr. Brenner.
That's correct.
Do you know what their meeting schedules are?
The economic development is the fourth Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM.
I'm out.
MJTC, I think, is the third Wednesday, and MRPC, I think, is the third Thursday. They've been fairly sporadic recently.
What is MJTC?
Montezuma Joint Transportation.
No, no, what's the meeting schedule, sorry?
I was like, I thought you would know what that was, Paul.
No, I thought MR, MRPC is the third Thursday.
I think MJTC is the third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday evening, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Uh, MJTC, I'm sorry, it's at 2:30 to 4:00.
Oh, on Wed...
Meeting, Wednesday, December 8th is the next one, so it seems to be a Wednesday afternoon.
Is it the first Wednesday, then?
Must be.
Okay.
No, that's the second Wednesday.
Okay.
Because the first is a, is, the first is the first Wednesday this coming month.
Yeah.
So it looks like second Wednesday, you know, mid-afternoon.
Yeah, mid-afternoon, I can't do that.
Completely convenient time for most people.
Yeah, no. I could potentially do the third Thursday for MRPC. I don't have a meeting that night.
Uh, MRPC meeting at, online only. It looks like January 6th is the next one.
So I could do MRPC, but the other two, those are on days I can't.
Yeah, and that's, and the MRPC meeting is, is digital.
Yeah.
As of right now. It looks like the MJTC has been canceled the last two times.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm still on their mailing, because from being on the MPO, I still get all the emails.
Oh, it looks like, yeah, it, it must be the second Thursday, second Wednesday, second Thursday, because there's a
Oh, wait a minute.
A meeting on December 9th, which is a week from Thursday.
Is MRPC the second Thursday or the third Thursday?
Second Thursday.
Okay, can't do it. I have a meeting on the second and fourth Thursday. So I'm out.
And, um, stormwater is the 16th.
Thank you.
Do we have any business with MRPC or MJTC right now in terms of projects?
Uh, I don't think we have anything with MRPC. And really, any business or projects we have with them wouldn't be affected by that MRPC meeting. That's really a business meeting of the commission in general. They do announce comings and goings and, uh, programs and projects, but they also communicate that around by email.
But I will say that having been on both MRPC and MPO, attending the meetings, when they do things like the unified planning, um, all of those things that they're giving funding to, if the town participates, you are much more likely to be given the money.
Yes, and...
So...
MPO is part of MJTC.
No, no, MPO makes the decision. MJTC makes recommendations.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
MPO is where the power is. They're, they're the fiduciary agent for federal funding as a conduit through DOT. DOT holds three seats on the MPO.
Right.
Uh, it has significant sway in the way that funding goes.
And MPO has to be a selectman. Do we know if we have a selectman serving on the MPO?
I believe that we do.
Just curious.
Yeah. Well, because the paving of 13 and Summer Street.
Were all, when I was on the MPO, yeah, yeah. And there are many, many, many roads in Lunenburg that are eligible for funding.
Federal aid eligible, yes.
There are, I think it's 25 roads in Lunenburg are eligible for federal funding. So some of the paving and projects we do, had we gone through the MPO process, we could have saved ourselves a boatload of money. So hopefully someone is actively looking at that stuff.
You.
No, I'm, I'm not any, I'm not anymore.
You're on the list. You're on the list.
I'm on the list.
Google says you're it.
Yeah, well, I...
The, the most recent list they have up is 2017.
I actually would have loved to have stayed on the MPO, um, but I can't, because it has to be a member of the Board of Selectmen.
It can't be an appointed.
No.
Uh, I don't know, because there isn't a current list.
Okay.
I can, I can follow up and check on that.
So unfortunately, all of those nights, I have other meetings. So unfortunately, all of those nights, I have other meetings. And Wednesday at 2:30, I can't. Because I have a grandchild, who's three.
They wouldn't enjoy those meetings?
No.
So how are we going to do this from an administrative standpoint? Are we appointing an alternate? Because Mr. Brenner serves in all these roles, are, are we gonna?
If you just go, they're not going to turn your way.
Okay. I mean, I'd be interested in doing the Economic Development Committee on a temporary basis until Mr. Brenner comes back. The other two meetings are tough time-wise.
Yeah.
They're both, and this time of year, I could probably swing it, but once spring rolls around, that would be-
Well, hopefully Mr. Brenner will be back by then.
Be back by then, yeah.
I have zero interest in any one of the three.
Tell it like it is, Matt.
We appreciate your honesty.
Yeah, most people, most people are one way or another.
I mean, I don't mind doing the Economic Development Committee. I think that's probably the best fit for me.
Do you know what time MRPC meets on Thursdays? My meeting's at seven.
Seven.
Yeah, okay, nope.
You just have two screens, one on, one for each.
No, one's in person, so that won't work.
Well, I have no issue taking up the Economic Development Committee. Maybe we table the other two.
I was gonna say, table, and, and maybe revisiting it after the new year is a time that we have a better idea of when, what Mr. Brenner's outlook looks like, and if it's only December, January, February, and he's back in the swing of things in March, it's not a huge-
Right.
Ding, and, you know, I suspect at least one of December or January will get canceled. That's usually how it works with the regional planning agencies.
Yeah, it's unusual that you meet in those months, anyway.
All right. Special town meeting, we got what we asked for, and all of us got a shock at what the cost of the proposed town offices were, whether rehab or new construction. So guess that plate spins a little bit longer while everyone figures out what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only comment along those lines is, I was on TCP when building design when that process first started.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember early on in the conversations, the selectman representative on the committee at that point alluded to a budget of somewhere between 10 and 15 million dollars, and I thought it was very light. You know, they're just, it's a massive building over there. You've got a lot of square footage, and regardless of what your materials costs and labor and everything that's gone up in the last 12 months, it, the fact remains, you've got a 55,000 square foot building, and it's just a huge process.
And never mind the building, the stormwater and the parking and all of that isn't, isn't cheap and-
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, there's, there's a lot to it. I will say that as a community, I feel like Lunenburg builds big, you know, you drive around and you look at the size of, you know, Air's fire station or Shirley's fire station versus ours, police stations versus ours. I mean, we like to build big projects.
I completely agree.
And from a personal standpoint, I think, you know, overall, we're headed in a direction where the big buildings aren't necessarily, all they're cracked up to be. I mean, you pull building permits online, everything's email, you pay bills online. I mean, that's just the way things are headed. So I, I think as a community, we really need to consider what we're building because you take care of that building every year going forward, and the bigger they are, the more money they take. I, I forget what, we spent a town meeting this spring, but I, my recollection was that we invested $200,000 in new carpet at the public safety.
Mm-hmm.
We're not even done paying the note on the public safety, and we're already throwing huge sums of money into it, and, you know, it's, it becomes a challenge.
Carpet was the library, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would we, nah. It was, I think it, I think it was the boilers at the public safety building. It had something to do with the heat system.
HVAC, HVAC system.
They had an unfinished room they were using, and Jim kept trying to get that finished.
But regardless of which building and, you know, exactly what the expense was, these buildings just, they take money to run them, and, you know, the more you have, the more you spend on things. So I think we need to look at things in a more realistic fashion, and it's great to do a study that says, we would love to have all this space, but at the end of the day, if you can't get it approved, what good is it? Yeah, so.
So, so since both funding articles were shot down, where does that leave the- They were passed over.
They were passed over.
Well, effectively, they're not funded, so they're basically shot down. But what does that leave the TCP BDC? I was under the impression from town meeting that the idea was to pass over the articles in hopes that between now and annual town meeting, there could be more information and discussion about the numbers that were received and a reaproach to something at spring, and what that is, I don't know. So my understanding of it was TPC BDC would be looking at doing that. Approaching another article or articles for spring town meeting, covering the numbers because the numbers only came in, what, 14 or so days before town meeting. There was concern that no one was going to be really ready or capable of having the full discussion without having time to dissect and talk about what those numbers were and what they meant.
But we've gone through all the money that was associated with that group.
I, this is my recollection, I don't, I, I, I'm not in charge of that, so.
Right, well, yeah. I think that's just spinning wheels, honestly.
Well, and I, I made a comment at town meeting that encouraged people not to pass the articles over, to vote on, because I don't see how you move forward in a direction without having-
Direction.
Real feedback from town meeting, and I think there was a portion of the people involved in those articles that knew that they were going to get shot down and would rather pass over and kick the can versus hearing a no. But in my mind, as much as you don't want to hear a no and, you know, confront the fact that you spent $300,000 engineering something that will probably never get built if it gets shot down at town meeting, I look at that as being valuable information because at this point, we just kicked the can another six months to spring town meeting, and it, I don't see the price tag getting smaller by spring town meeting.
Plus, we're gonna need a new can sooner or later.
Yeah.
It's been kicked so many times.
Yeah, and I, I know a portion of the selectmen are frustrated with the fact that this thing's been going around and around and nothing's been done, but the reality is, there hasn't been a single article presented at town meeting that enabled that body to vote on any project. Period.
Enabled what body?
Town meeting.
Okay.
We, in two years of town meeting and special town meeting, we have not seen one article come forward from TCP, BDC, or the selectman that says, we want to renovate, we want to build new, we want to do anything, nothing. There's been nothing. That's the reality of it. The only thing that town meeting was able to vote on was spending money on engineering. And it's really difficult, in my opinion, to move something forward if you don't take votes and have articles that create a decision. So, but, well, stay tuned. I mean, from a planning board perspective, we need to figure out what we want to do with the watershed map and the bylaw stuff.
Yeah, I'll get that stuff out for next meeting to discuss at the last meeting of the month.
Hmm.
I mean, I'm not a great fan of adding things to spring town meeting because I feel like it is a big meeting to begin with, but hopefully if that's all we have at that point, then we can focus on those two issues, the math and then the related-
The bylaws.
Bylaw stuff. And perhaps try to do some sort of informative process prior to town meeting, just to explain to people what-
Yeah, I'd like us, I know we have to have a public hearing, but I'd like us to do more than that. I'd like us to put something up on the website, or put something up on the scroll, or actually both of those things, just so people are aware and, and know what's happening, so we don't get a whole bunch of questions and concerns at town meeting.
Yeah. Any other special town meeting stuff?
No. And the last thing is Uma Flowers. I believe they're going to the select board on Tuesday to negotiate their host community agreement. They've done their community meeting here in this room, I think it's still up on the town's YouTube page. So they would negotiate a host community agreement with the select board. Once that's signed, they'll go back to Cannabis Control and apply for their provisional license, and then they'll come to this body for their special permit. Their location is the old Donleys, or the current Donleys, I guess.
The current Donleys, the current Donleys.
It will be the old Donleys soon enough. I would expect that their processing time at the Cannabis Control Commission will probably be between three and six months because they're on the precipice of opening a retail location in Pepperell. So their background checks, their business plans, their pro formas, all of that is, has already been recently approved, and I imagine there's going to be a search and replace for Pepperell to Lunenburg and addresses, and, so I don't think there's a heavy lift on the cannabis control side of things, other than just going through and verifying the information is correct. I did receive a call from one of the owners of the group inquiring about what the special permit process looked like. I think she was ready to file, and I said, well, you need to do this first, and she said, oh, okay. But she did inquire about security planning and that sort of stuff. That will be something that is not submitted to this board as part of the filing because it then becomes a public document, and for obvious reasons, that doesn't, we don't want that to be a public document. But we do require a sign-off from the chief of police. So I did encourage her to reach out to Chief Gamble and start having those discussions. I said, you can do as much background work as you want, you can get everything in place, we just can't accept the filing until you have your provisional license. So you may start to hear and see them in and about town, working on, on that process.
Makes sense. You just mentioned Chief Gamble, and I want to go back to my capital planning committee after we, I mean, yeah.
That's all, that's, that's it. I just was giving you the update that it's around.
All right, so I had a brain malfunction. We met with the school, our last meeting was with the police department, and the majority of their capital requests are for vehicles. And we did have a discussion at the meeting about whether or not it made sense to incorporate vehicles into budgets versus part of the capital plan, and the consensus of the committee was it made sense to keep them as part of the capital plan because they are capital expenditures. That way, the voters know what the money is being spent on, it's definitively for that expense. So that was the consensus of the committee.
Meeting schedule, we meet here at Town Hall, 6:30 PM. Our next two meetings are December 13th and December 27th.
The 27th, I will be gone. I'm gone between Christmas and New Year.
So we might not have a meeting on the 27th, is what you're saying?
I'm saying the 27th. Our plan right now is to be in Arizona. If that changes, I'll let you know, but-
All right. Ongoing items, Pondview Commons.
So I did speak to the town manager just today, and she indicated that she has heard absolutely nothing from the state regarding that project.
Can we check with them?
She's been the one who's communicated, and I, they said 90 days, we're not 90 days yet.
When is 90, when did we submit it?
Uh, maybe we are 90 days, because it was, I think it was September 1st.
It's gotta be close, I would imagine.
I, I don't think we'll hear anything till after the new year, personally. I just think that's where we're at.
The 90 days, is that statutory, or is that, no, it's just an idea of the timeline? They have no requirement for a response, okay.
Just looking back to see if I recall any now.
Because it was, originally, it was supposed to be early August, and then it got pushed back.
Then they extended it, then they extended it.
Yeah, and I, I'm almost positive it was like September 1st that it was due by, or August like 29th, or something to that effect. And the master plan, I've met with the capital planning committee, the request is in, and it's in their capable hands to decide whether or not they want to fund that as a capital item.
So it looks like everything got submitted for Pondview Commons around September 16th.
That's right. I thought it was, I thought it was the middle of September.
All right. Maybe September 1st was when it was originally due.
Yeah.
So 30, 60, yeah, we're creeping up on it.
Yeah. So I don't see any public comment on Zoom.
All right.
Or in the audience.
Any board comments or concerns? All right. Entertaining, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion?
Only that I really like the 5 o'clock, although it's hard to get here at 5 o'clock, I like being done at 6:30.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
But you're not done because you got a bunch of stuff to sign.
Oh, buzzkill.